We can't hear back here, just like now, there's no way I know what you're saying.
Okay. Okay, if you have your phones on, please turn them off. Candidates will come up here to the podium to answer questions, just because of the angle for the camera. I'll leave the microphone up here. The first question, you will stand up, introduce yourselves, just, I'm sure everybody knows who you are, but introduce yourselves anyway. And the question is, what makes you stand out as a candidate? Who wants to go first? Okay.
Hello, my name is Donald Fleek. I'm a Republican, run for county commissioner, and I'm here today looking for your vote. I wanted to give a little bit about me. I am currently the mayor of the village of Bloomingburg. I've was council member for 11 years, been mayor for seven years. So I take and I work on different parts of the budget. I help with the village budget. I've worked on the finance committee, the different things. I've helped to keep the budget balanced in Bloomingburg. We have a small budget, not much money, so we have to, we have to really watch what we do. So I have the experience as far as being a, you know, working in the government as far as the municipality. So I understand how that works. I have, I'm a quick learner. I have to pick it up quick because things change so, so fast. I've worked with the village, I've gotten grants, worked with the grants, getting over one and a half million dollars in the village for, you know, for grant fundings for different projects. And so I kind of pride myself on that. I've worked with Mike Carey, I've worked with the different programs that the county has, and we've received grants for our new water system that we're working on putting in. We've also received grants for our park, working at the park, getting that improved for the youth. Things we're just trying to do for, you know, for Fayette County to make it a better place. But I have the experience, I've just been involved with it for so many years, and just having to deal with different aspects. So that's what I feel like makes me stand out as a candidate.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me? Hello, everybody, my name is Sean Remington, the owner of Remington Electric. And what makes me stand out as a candidate is, besides being an independent and representing the majority of the voters, or 70% of registered voters in Fayette County are unaffiliated. For, I probably know at least 60% of this room have conversations with me. And what I am is a problem solver. I always have been, as a businessperson, I've been an inventor. And what I've seen in local governance is a few people cannot make these decisions. There's breakdowns in communication, there's people having strong opinions as information comes in from social media. And it dawned on me, a think tank is a much wiser way to identify, should we or shouldn't we spend our tax dollars with an individual's idea? So I've looked at the old problems throughout politics where every election cycle, the next person's going, I'm going to be the one, I'm going to be the one that's going to fix it. And I'm just saying, I'm not the one. It's going to take, it's not me, it's going to take we. It's going to take a new way to look at these problems. The internet is causing so much confirmation bias, it's causing echo chambers. So I've identified a six-step process of a way to identify, separating the facts from the opinion. So that's what clearly separates me, something radically new versus what, you know, where we tend to see in small-town politics. So I would say that clearly defines me as something new. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, I'm Amy Wright, and I'm here because I'm running as your first woman candidate for county commissioner. And I am the Democrat here at the table, so that offers something different. Not only am I a woman, but I'm a Democrat that offers something different. So I offer a unique perspective that's never been brought to the board of county commissioners before. As a woman, I bring the diverse perspective and a viewpoint to the table. And my background in social services and counseling allows me to assess the strengths and the needs of our county from a different angle. I want to make sure that all county voices are heard and considered when decisions are made. And that's why I'm running for county commissioner. I think that I have worked my career in helping people overcome challenges, and that's what I hope to do for the county commissioner position. Thank you.
I think number two, all you all really already answered, was what specific experience do you have that is relative to the commissioner's job? So let's pick. How would you involve the public in the commissioner's decision-making process? How would you get public input? Just keep going the way we did before?
Sean's going to take over.
Just, I do have a timer set for two minutes, but so far, y'all are saying whatever that is. You're on it.
Well, again, not to beat a dead horse. Can you hear me? Okay. Not to beat a dead horse, but again, this town, when I've grown up in it, it's been very, I've heard somebody said, and, you know, when I first got involved trying to fix an issue of a public safety issue, I had never known ambition to get into politics. It was a safety issue where my daughter could get by a car, the connection from Kroger's to the park. Tried to fix that, identified breakdowns in communication, other issues with that. It just said, this is a super inefficient way to do this. So it dawned on me, social media is a good thing where anyone can introduce an idea or a problem, but it breaks down from there immediately. So the system that I'm implementing or discussing is this system where anyone can introduce an idea or a problem, but that's just your opinion. So there's a six-step process, anyone introduces an idea, it goes to the registered members of this county, they agree, disagree, we save form your volunteer committees, research, why is this person right? Why is this person wrong? Now I've got people who are highly educated on your opinion. We bring those groups together, we debate those groups, we can stream that debate from anywhere. You can now micro-vote, it's a more efficient way of voting. Instead of just a yes or no, it's a one to 10 voting. You hear something at the debate you like, that's a 10. You hear something you don't like, that's a 1. Now we've got many data points. If you take the median average of all of those data points, that's mathematically the truest thing to do or not to do with our tax dollars with your idea. Face systems, you can also use a soundboard. Instead of, I did a long response about the chip seal. People were saying, oh, the chip seal, it's, this is terrible. They're, they're trying to save money, and they're using this much cheaper, awful product, chip seal. Well, I interviewed ODOT, he's like, no, our budgets are allocated, we're not going to repave that road for another seven years with all this heavy construction, chip seal's going to get us through it. So the other thing with the citizens league is, what I say is, people tend to be, everyone wants to have an opinion, but you have to be educated on the issue to be positive about it. You can always be negative about something you don't understand. So what I'm saying is, even if you see something go through the citizens league, it didn't quite churn out the way that you wanted, you became educated on it. You may say, you know what, it's not what I was thinking, but now I know way more about this, and I'm not as negative about it. And it's also going to use a message board. Here, this road is happening, this manufacturing is coming, this is not, this is just being talked about. We have the technology to do this. So I don't, I feel like that is a new way to do things. So that's how I would bring way more transparency, way more interaction, just saying, hey, you can call me, you know, come to the meetings. We don't have time for that. Technology allows us to implement ideas rapidly, and we should use that. So thank you.
Well, I think about a few things Sean was talking about. The first thing is, chip and seal is a state project, that's not a county project. That's not something that we would have any input on either way. Also, open to ideas, he's talking about the program that would bring in the community. My mom don't even own a computer, so my mom would, and she doesn't get out very well, so she would have a hard time being involved in that part of it. But I, as a candidate, as a commissioner, would be open to all ideas. I have a phone, I have email, and I have meetings, I'd have meetings. I would bring each and every one in to a meeting that wanted to come. I would be totally available to anyone by phone anytime that they wanted to call me. Open, with the open public, that's, with open to the public just makes everything better as far as I'm concerned, as far as getting the information to me. And then, once they get the information to me, and I meet with other people, we'll come up with the best solution, and then I would vote for what the county wanted to have. I would continue that and make it, you know, make it the best decision, what I feel is like the right decision for everyone.
So, in my experience of being out on the campaign trail, I've been out there knocking on doors year after year now, and I've been talking to voters. And I think that we could bring more of that to our voters. We could, we could make sure that we're out there talking to our voters. And because they're the reasons we're here, they're the reason why we stand up here, they're the reason why all of us are asking for your vote. So educating our residents about the role of our county government, that's been something that I've been working hard about, and, and the things that are happening at a state level too, that impact us here at the county level. So my stance has always been educating voters, and that's part of civic engagement. That's part of my passion and the reason why I decided to pursue running for county commissioner. So I would invest that same kind of passion and purpose to getting out there and making sure that the voters understand what's happening at our, in our meetings, what's happening at our county level, what's happening on our boards, and all the way around. Thank you.
All right, the third question is, do you have any specific goals for taking the county commissioner job? So Amy, I hate to have you jump up again, but I think it's your turn to go first.
Sorry, public speaking is something that I'm getting used to. So my specific goal for the job is to bridge the gap between the people and the decision-makers, ensuring that voices of Fayette County are heard and considered when the, when, when decisions are made, because progress is unfolding here in our community. I'm committed to shaping a brighter future for Fayette County, where diversity is celebrated and every resident feels that they're valued and heard, because they don't feel like that right now. They feel disenfranchised, they feel disconnected. They say, I don't go vote because there's not choices. Well, we have choices now. And I'm committed to making sure that they understand that we are there to help them.
Specific goals for the job? I just want to create a better place to live. Some of my things I want to do is I want to preserve the farmland. If you can grow a crop, I want it to grow a crop. I survive off of that. That was what I've done for, well, many, many years. It's a heritage in the farm life that, you know, the hand down from the next generation to the next generation. And I want to be able to continue that, that they can do that, that the kids, that are the farmers' kids can become the farmers, and to continue that on. That's one of the big things, is to support the farmers. I also took and support first responders. I want them to be able to have the things that they need. I wanted the equipment they need. I want them to have the training that they need. I want them to be safe when they're out, and when they're doing what, to protect and meet. I want them to have all the things they need to be protected. And I want to support the youth. Any kind of programs that the youth has, I want to support that. I want them to, to grow here, I want them to get a good education here. I want them to take, and when they get out of school, I want them to be able to get a good job here, and then I want them to be able to live here. I appreciate Fayette County, Fayette County is my home, and this is, I want to make it a better place to live.
So goal, I had prepared this as the last question, I think I was on there as the last question. So not to be epic about it, but for me, my main goal is to create a more perfect union. Being born on July 4th, I've been studying politics and how the country was founded since I was a little boy. As it's gone to this point, and people are pretty much disgusted with politics and what it is, I, my goal is to create a system that allows humans to interact and communicate more wisely, more efficiently, and more effectively. That's the biggest problem I see in society right now, is the lack, the ability to hear each other. Everyone is in, the internet is causing more silence. I mean, I would say people are living in two different realities, more so than 20 years ago. Because the internet will give you what you want. Whatever reality you want to live, you can get that reality. And I say, that can be fine, and so you force your reality on someone else. So that is my main goal. Regardless of what happens in November, I'm going to still be working on creating this think tank. But you know, you know, like I was saying, the think tank is not just about for the tech people. I, I do a lot of work for people of all ages. I've been in this community for 12 years as a business, spoke to so many people. And I've been pitching this idea for about three years now. I've probably pitched a few, 300 people a year, and the consensus is, it's 99% of people love this idea. Because I'm not trying to tell you, you need to come to this side, or you, I need to invent you these ideas. It's like, we all have ideas. So I've said that a community think tank would also have a message board, where older people that are not on the computer could come in and call, they could call and ask them a question, and they would have a room like this where they could, once in a while, come and, hey, I want to sit down and help explain this to me. And, you know, on the economy of the chip seal, it's not really about like, who's paying for this and who's paying for that. My point is, it's just, we're all paying for these taxes. And there's so many different departments that people just get so fed up with, they're like, I don't know, I can't tell. I worked at the VA hospital, and we literally wired a building that was torn down the next year. And I asked why, and they said, well, it just was in the contract, and it's just the government, that's how it works. It's too hard to take it out. And so when we have these systems that are so complex, everyone is an individual, and this room feels powerless on their own. What I'm saying is, with this systematic way, we are stronger as a group, but we don't have the language to communicate with each other properly, because we all have our own confirmation bias, myself included. So that is my goal, regardless of what happens in November. Thank you.
Okay, one of the questions is, well, it's a yes and no question, which, so please elaborate, don't just say yes or no. Would you like to see more housing or commercial building in the county? And as you used to say in our test at school, please explain.
Yes. I would like to see more, I'd like to see more affordable housing in the county, and I'd like to see more business also in the county. Our youth, when the youth are here, when they get out of school, I want them to be able to work here, to live here, and to stay right here in Fayette County. Fayette County is a great place to live. It's safe, it's, it's just a good place. If I can get the youth to stay here, then it can kind of keeps, it keeps us, keeps our heritage alive, it keeps everything, you know, going in the right direction. It's just a great place to live, and we want to keep everybody here that we can keep here.
So housing and the lack of affordable housing is an issue here and across the state. So prices of, home prices are increasing faster than our, our income. So recently, the Coalition on Homelessness and Housing in Ohio released a report that said the average, or average Ohioan needs to make $20.81 an hour working full-time to afford a modest two-bedroom apartment. How many jobs do we have that, you know, can pay that right now? We need to increase affordable housing, both for our renters and our landlords are suffering too. So they're being impacted by the increase of housing costs. It's necessary that our county and our city officials support both our landlords, our renters, our homeowners, to find a solution to this problem. So yes, I believe housing is an issue that we need to address in the county.
Also, yes, obviously. Being in construction my entire life, you know, family contractors, I went on to Lower Oaks, took construction technology, went on to get my master electrical license, start my own company. So know a lot about construction, talked about it for years. Yeah, so housing is not, it's a problem all over the country. Housing's not affordable for multiple reasons. We have the waning of skilled trades, as the baby boomers are aging out, the younger generations are going to replace them. Inflation, material costs, speculative real estate market, all these things cost where, when I think about affordable housing, it's really about, the American dream was, you're a young family, you get your first starter home, and you slow as you can forward, you start stepping up, stepping up. That, that's not even possible anymore. And so for me, not just to, you know, so I go back as an inventor and go deep into it and go, okay, what's the base value of this, what is the first principle sticking with this? And we're going to have to think very deeply about new technology. 3D printing is a way where we can bring down labor costs, it also brings down material costs. So we're going to have to think about new ways of building. Stick-framed houses are super inefficient. We just built that way because we had abundant trees and energy was cheap. We can't count on that anymore. So we really have to think very deeply. But as development happens, it's going to become a speculative market. Investors are going to flood all over this country to come here. I've been saying this for years, I think many people in the city council and stuff know me, Fayette County is the new hottest place in the country. I mean, I've been saying this for years. You look where Ohio is at in the country, you look where Fayette County is in the state. And Intel coming to Ohio, Ohio's new Silicon Valley, Honda LG coming here. I mean, that's going to happen. So that is an opportunity to have a stronger middle class. That's a pitfall. We don't want to be flipped. We don't want to, how do we have higher wage jobs, but how do we not overdevelop? And overdeveloping is a problem. In the farming aspect, I said this to Godwin 10 years ago. I'm like, how can we become food basket of central Ohio? How can we actually grow? Let's start with high-end restaurants, let's start with hobby crops. And so it's very important that we don't just develop every piece of farmland, that we, 100 years out, there's food, still food grown here. Because COVID, I've been talking about this way, but a lot of people don't really see it the way I was seeing it until COVID happened. Everyone's goes, oh, supply chains are issues. It'd be very wise if we grew it here than relying on trucks coming in. The other aspect of this is too, is on development, is the taxes generated from new subdivision do not pay for the infrastructure leading to that subdivision. So we have to think very clearly ahead of time, because if we wait until a subdivision's built to widen that road, it's extremely painful and expensive to do it after the fact. So we have to have these clear conversations first. Do we want to do this? And not what things tend to be, where the public is in the dark, and we're going to do this thing, and just a few people get to make that decision on it that day, little project's going to happen. It should, if it's going to be on the backs of the entire tax base, and it is, that's how these things work. It needs, everyone needs to be in the public, speaking about it, and, and again, figuring it out through the think tank. I believe that's the wisest way to do that, so thank you.
So is this a two-minute limit or a four-minute limit on the questions? Well, we have four minutes here, so two minutes should be enough.
Okay, oh, let's see. Do you feel there is enough public? Do you feel there are enough transportation options to get around the county?
They just nodded me to go to God.
Okay.
I'll try to keep it. Everyone who knows, who knows the one limit, so I apologize.
Well, not today.
Sorry. Wow.
We need two minutes, and everybody needs to be fair.
Can I start? So I interviewed Fayette Madison Transportation, and they do, they have a fair amount of vehicles, but they are not funded by the county commissioners, and a lot of it's in grants. And it's enough to get a fair amount done, but obviously there's gaps. I talked with the Veterans Association, I've talked to House Associates on Aging. There's definitely gaps with our transportation. I, as this has gone on, I've learned more and more and more about it. So also with nursing homes, it's becoming an issue where people from, can go from nursing homes to the hospital. As the baby boomer age is, over the next 10 years, this is going to increase more and more and more. So as a community, we're going to have to look and say, are we going to have to fund this through taxes? But we need to have this conversation, because right now, it appears to be there is not enough transportation for every issue now. But the people that are doing it, they're, they're trying their best, and they do, on some days are crushing it, and then some days they just don't have the resources. So is that good? Is that?
You're good. You've got 38 seconds left.
So public transportation is something we struggle with here in Fayette County, but we are working on that. That is something that everybody works hard on over there at Community Action Fayette Transportation. So there's a variety of reasons why people can't drive, and Sean's right, our age, our population is aging. In the 2020 census, we had a 17.7% population that is 65 or older. So it is something we need to take care of and look into. My experience at Job and Family Services is that we not only need public transportation, but we need medical transportation, we need transportation to jobs, because that's, that's coming in quick. In 2023, I believe we did have a survey, and I really encouraged a lot of people to complete that survey. I don't know how much participation we got, but I did make sure that I pushed that to everybody that came through the door at Ohio Means Jobs. Public transportation and community development, they go hand in hand. Access to public transportation and connectivity to different parts of our county promotes a sense of community. It also encourages services, businesses, and infrastructure along those routes, which benefits the entire county.
The question, the question that says on the end of it says, the city to the mall. And I'm all for, if someone wants to start a business that is for transportation, I would do everything in my power to help that to happen. We have issues right now where people can't get to doctors, or they can't get to food, or they can't get to support their local, you know, they can't get to their, the local grocery stores to even get the food. Sometimes they take them to the doctors, they drop them off, they don't go back to get them for hours, you know, because they're stuck there because of the, the transportation is so limited. So I would support the local programs. The commissioners have just given more money to community, or the Commission on Aging, to help with that, you know, to help them to get to the Commission on Aging. So I would support anything that, you know, anything that would help to increase the, the transportation in the local area. I don't, the malls kind of not real prosperous right now, so, but as far as around here and the local, I would support the, the aspect of helping the locals.
Okay, speaking of transportation, are there any specific traffic problems you would like to address in the county?
So there is, yeah, there's many places around town that are in the county that need addressed. Sometimes it happens quickly, you know, we're by Honda, the roundabout. Something that's what happened quickly, you know, over by Honda, the roundabout, excuse me, that roundabout just happened, but the new roundabout's going to be next year over by USA. Where Washington Courthouse is expanding across the highway. I had said, we have these apartments there behind Home Depot, we need a sidewalk that goes across there. I watched little kids being up on that concrete. I said, we also need a barrier. My mom was killed by a teenager throwing a rock over a ridge. So I had spoke to the city about that, and the city said, that's an ODOT project. I spoke to ODOT, they were like, nobody really spotted out they want that. And I was like, I think that's the thing that's really needed, and they agreed. But when I looked at all the different issues, I said, well, if we had to pick one, how about at Miami Trace High School? The traffic's going to be increasing from town, people commuting to where these new factories are going to be. From the amount of parents, the amount of buses, the amount of young drivers in and out of there. That's a high opportunity, especially young people to be injured. So I think that, that intersection right there at the corner of the high school is where on 41 is probably the first one I would pick. Should have did my timer, I would keep going, I'll stop. I got 41 seconds, but yeah, I, when I was a teenager there, I had a friend who I remember leaving there, crashed into a tree. Just because when you're young, the impulsiveness of going, should I go, should I not go? So we exponentially increase the variables, like people are hesitant in the roundabouts, but the studies do show they really do limit the site impact injuries. So the roundabouts seem like they will be the way to go. Yeah, thank you.
As far as the roundabouts coming in, I'm, I'm with a lot of residents here. I hope that I can get used to them and learn it with some efficiency without, without causing a lot of congestion. But I have heard some feedback about nervousness and indecisiveness about what that is, and I try to promote the safety of that coming in. We have seen some fatalities out there. That's tragic. So downtown, it appears that we're doing a little bit about the traffic flow. There's some markers, some new markers on the, on the ground. So I think that traffic is always something we need to look at. And parking, our county's growing, so we, and street maintenance is always going to be something that's going to be ongoing, that we need to consider. So that's, was my answer to that question. I do agree with Sean, that's a dangerous spot out there at Miami Trace. I've dropped my nieces and nephews off out there. It's really hairy. I'm glad that here in town, we, for our kids, we have a better flow. I think that we could do a little bit better out there too, and look into that, keeping them safe.
As a county commissioner, I'd support improving the rural roads. We want to keep them safe for the vehicles, as well as for farmers and their equipment and their trucks. Talking about the roundabouts, I agree, there is some dangerous intersections. But as a commissioner, I would only be able to work with Ohio Department of Transportation, because those things are on the state routes. The state routes, the highway, or the state is in control of those. So as a commissioner, I would be definitely willing to work with them, and I would make it a point to assist them in any way possible. The worst thing they find about the roundabouts is the land around them is, it doesn't, it's hard to get the, they have to make sure they get all the land around to try to pull them all together to where they can't even, you know, build a roundabout. That's where the biggest issue comes in. But again, that's a state, the roundabouts on the state routes belong to them, but I would focus more on the rural roads to make sure that our traffic for the locals is, you know, is, is safe and, and good.
What would you change in the county, or focus on, and the examples are traffic, beautification of certain areas, parking, more businesses?
All right. So one of the things I talk about, something I, so I would connect, I'd work on connecting the bike trail from Opta to town here behind the park, that's close to Y M C A. So this would promote tourism. And what I said when downtown is trying to become more vibrant with the boutiques and stuff. Again, just looking at, you know, looking at the base thing, it's like, this time in history, everyone shops on Amazon. I mean, we want to support local and stuff, but at the end of the day, we're still going to go, I can get a better, cheaper, more efficient, faster on Amazon. So I said, you have to make retail an experience-based economy. And so what that means is, you're, you're going out doing things that Amazon can't give you, and you know you're going to buy those goods and services from those people, or they would not be able to support that. So I feel like, again, courthouse is greatest thing, asset is we don't have rolling mountains in the background, but we are in the center of everything. So kind of like Route 66 back in the day, when people were passing through, we just get them to stop and do stuff. So if we can connect that bike trail, we can have tourism through it. The, now that Chillicothe is being invested world heritage site, there's people that'll travel around the country. We've talked about doing a ultra marathon or run from Cincinnati to Chile called the Cincy to Chile Challenge. It's, as far as investment, I've had people, that's a big thing with me is about return on investment tax laws. That's why I say only a think tank can figure that out. A few individuals cannot figure that out, it's just too complex. But the studies have been done, there, for every dollar invested, there's a $7 to $11 investment on parks and trails. So, and there's grants out there, so I actually feel that this investment would pay back for itself. So that's one of the big improvements that I would focus on too, not just about for trails or outdoor activities. It's about how they local business, strong middle class knock on effect. And there's also, the best thing you could do for mental health is spending time in nature in the outdoors. Thank you.
As a commissioner, as your commissioner, I would support improving our infrastructure and work on the issues of traffic flow. We have some dangerous intersections in the county, and I would continue to focus on that, working with ODOT and the different ones to, to get those accomplished. I'd like to work on a sentence to draw small business and to work towards affordable housing. I would also be willing to work with the city to help revitalize the downtown. I don't know what a commissioner exactly could do, but whatever it is to help to revitalize the downtown, I'd be willing to work with them. Work on continuing the bike path, as Sean said. It is something right now that currently the commissioners have a project going on between Milledgeville and Knockedit to work on that section. It's around, I think they said $2.7 million. They have a grant that's $1.8 million. It's just under two miles. And right now they're looking for $400,000 more dollars, you know, to fit, to be able to come up with the final funds to, to finish that project. And I'd want to continue those efforts, and I would want to work with the county to help them to find grant monies that would pay for those different projects.
Fayette County is in need of more youth and community services. Providing activities and programs to our young people to keep them engaged and on a positive path, that's important part of community. Additionally, senior citizens in our community need our support. Ensuring seniors have access to services and programs to support their well-being and quality of life should be a priority. And that's my commitment as county commissioner, and some of the things that I'd like to focus on.
Okay, is there any special project for the county you would like to see in the future? It could be commercial, it could be housing, it could be anything. So what would be your particular project that you would like to see going forward?
I think a lot of the questions are kind of the, kind of down the same, the same area. Infrastructure is a big one for the, for the county. That's one of the, the main areas that we need to, to focus on. I know that, I know that support of the first responders, that's another area we need to, you know, to focus on. We need to support the youth, that's another area we need to focus on. There's jobs and housings, you know, housing projects, those are issues that are affecting the county that, that we need in the future. As far as one specific item, there's just too many. I mean, we need to focus on all. And once we get in, once one of us get into the commissioner's office, I'm sure there'll be more, more things that come forward that we know about, that things may change at that time. But housing and transportation and the infrastructure is probably one of some of the biggest things, along with the first responders and the farmers. We got to take care of the farmers. I want to keep the farmland booming.
Well, what I'd like to see is a greater promotion in the skilled labor trades in our county school districts. I know that's something that we're working on. Our county and our state, we're in need of the skilled labor trades. So the state of Ohio has invested money and programs to prepare our youth for the workforce in a slew of career pathways. So there's a multitude of options and training for certifications in, in qualified industries that offer competitive wages and that work-life balance that many of our youth are seeking. So that's what I'd like to see.
Well, yeah, same thing, there's a million and one things that we could do. But, you know, I was trying to be a little bit more out of the box on this, and really liked the Scarecrow Festival and the community aspect of it, and going back to the experience-based economy, that's one of the most economic drivers for the downtown businesses. And so one of the ideas I had been pitching for a while now is another festival in April, Revolutionary Veterans. A lot of people really enjoy dressing up as, celebrating, pulling out the gettys for, we live in Washington Courthouse in Fayette County. So I said, we should have a festival honoring the history of this town, and where people could come and celebrate Revolutionary Veterans history, they could dress up. We did a post about this, and it had a lot, a lot of support, a lot, a lot of responses. So I think that would be an economic driver, something, another community event, being that far away from Scarecrow Festival would be a nice balance from it, it wouldn't overroll it, overrun it. So that's, that's one of the ideas. But again, I, I keep bringing things back to, this is just us throwing things at the wall. If we think about how governance works, that like, one or two people or five people are going to be the decision makers for an entire community is insane. It's just, it doesn't work. And before in history, it's the only option we had. But now we have the ability to figure out what's the median average that the taxpayer wants, and as a collective knowledge. I mean, there's science on this, and, and so that's the way we should figure out how we should do these things. So I'll just bring it back to that again. Thank you.
Okay, most of the questions do seem to be repeating some of the same things. Would you be willing to take questions from, from some of the public here? Everybody? Anybody? Mr. Fleek, are you okay with that?
Not too much.
Not, no, not too much. All right. If you have a question, would you like to come up, use the microphone, and ask the candidates your question?
May I suggest, for your benefit, when you attend future roundtables, discussions, to groups, et cetera, may I suggest you keep us 80 olds in mind, speak distinctly, hold the microphone close, so that you can let us hear what you are telling us?
Thank you, Ms. Alice.
That is good. That's the wisdom of our elders, and that is where the passive knowledge comes down.
Anything else from anybody in the audience?
I have a question.
Oh, hold on, I'll listen to Brother Reeve.
I just wanted to ask, there was some talk about micro voting?
Yes.
Like, there's an issue, you could ask the public, and then they would vote?
Yes.
So I just wanted to know how, who would finance this micro voting?
Very glad you asked that question. Um, so, so we have, I, sorry. So we have traditional voting, but what I said was, by creating, forming Fayette Citizens League as a nonprofit, it is decentralized. Once the site is up, it's not, it's not a private organization. It's not, it's, it's made up of everyone. It could be volunteer groups, there could be, just like many nonprofits are funded. There is funds for this, and, but, back to your question of how, like, are you asking how this would work?
No, I'm asking who's going to pay for an election to happen?
Well, if you think about this so digitally, so it's very low cost, because like, you're just using, going on an app. And it's, it's, if someone asked me once, like, are you trying to replace elected officials with this? And I was like, no, 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 this is so the elected officials have the median average, the knowledge to know what the public actually wants. It's more of a representative democracy than we have now, because you're getting the actual information of the general public and what they want. So once a nonprofit started and the website is started, it's not really about coming to taxpayers and be like, well, we need funding for this. Like, once the site's up, it's, there's not, there's not a huge expense. You're not printing paper. The, the amount of money spent on elections now and trying to educate the public, again, return on investment, the return on investment will be exponentially higher than the amount of money spent. But we're not saying all the taxpayers need to pony up for this. There, there's many ways that can be done. Did Dyke answer your question?
Well, yes and no, because now you're talking about electronics, and as was spoken earlier, not all of the elderly have access to the internet or know how to use the app on phones, so you're just franchising those.
Well, no, I'm not. No, no, well, I'd like to, you asked the second question, I'd like to finish that up. So, so just like, and again, any nonprofit, it's organizations, organizations are made up of a lot of volunteers. People are very passionate about something. So just like on voting day, there's many volunteers around this country that go volunteer their time, and there would be people, it's gonna be the exact same thing. There would be people super passionate about this, like, I'm going to volunteer my Saturday to go down to the, to the building, and there's people that are not on the internet coming in to, we collected these phone calls, and now we're going to work this out face to face. So it's not just for the, the technology age, but, but again, most of these things are handling through the internet. So that percentage of people are getting lesser and lesser and lesser. But I still, I had said this from day one, we had, we had posted about that a while ago, that it would still have a old school phone, face-to-face conversation with somebody. So does, does that answer your question?
Yes and no, we'll talk.
Well, I'd like to.
No, no, I, no, I would be my question.
Okay.
So first thing I see when, or I think of when he says that is, that puts my mom out again. Because my mom don't know how to do apps, she don't, she would not call in, she would not probably, she's 84, so I don't know if she would come over to a meeting, because my mom's not that kind of person. But, so that puts her out. But if my mom would vote for Commissioner Donald Fleek, I will take and, I will come to the best answer, and her trusting me as her county commissioner, then I would vote what's in best interest of Fayette County. I would take care of that on my own. So I don't, I, I feel like that that's kind of like a mob rule. It's the select few that come in, that pick and choose, that they want to get involved in that part of it, and then they, they're the ones that vote, so it's kind of that select few who would be, who'd be able to get involved in that.
Paul, please, please. Again, I, this gets that thing of talking on social media of talking past each other. It is the majority. It literally is the majority. We want, if a 99-year-old wants to participate, we want- to, if a 99-year-old wants to participate, we want to help that. But again, um, governance is about the majority. It's not about every single human being. I mean, that's how fire alarm systems are designed. It's, it's, so right now, many people aren't participating. So to say, well, this whole system is hooey because this, my mother wouldn't, if your mom votes now, she's going out making an effort. So I don't know why she couldn't, if she's gonna go vote, she wouldn't pick up a phone or, so, so that, that is kinda a false narrative to be like, well, this doesn't even, this couldn't even work. This makes no sense, cause in this one rare scenario. So again, pointed out that we would definitely have systems for people that are not participating, older people. But, um, but yes, I'll do that. Anyone else?
Last question.
Yes, sir.
Given the nature of the worldwide reach with the internet, how are you gonna vet those voters to restrict it to Fayette County? And how is that gonna be paid for?
Well, that's great. So, um, cybersecurity is, um, a thing that, um, I know a lot about. Um, not as much as my employee who's, um, going off the air force and is number three in the country in cybersecurity. So we have lots of conversations about cybersecurity. So right now, all your information is already, cause we've talked about that. So what happened in Columbus, like, right now, I don't think a lot of people in this town, uh, many in this room may know that, like, a lot of your, the commissioner's budget in, in all small towns is gonna keep increasing for cybersecurity. Now that hackers know, every small town in the United States is gonna be constant. It's gonna become an arms race on firewalls. And if we don't have commissioners that know about technology, I think I'm the only one. I, I don't know if it's speaking to me, but I, I would say, for the commissioners that are up there now, I, I believe that, um, I'm not seeing a lot for the age demographics, not a lot about technology. Um, I've talked to the IT guy, you know, but, but back to your direct question is that, so we've talked about that with user threads. How do we, how do we safeguard that your information is not mine? Um, cause right now, um, that's what these municipalities do. But your information is already with the DMV. It's already the election board. So Fayette Citizens League doesn't need to house your personal information. It just, there's things called user threads where you can verify digitally that this is the person that it is. And it would encompass the registered voters in Fayette County. So again, it'd be very easy to do. It's not a complex thing. This information already lies in these governing bodies that you already pay taxes to. So it's not reinventing the wheel. It's just, um, just like, it's done in technology. It's just, go, go ahead.
So people who don't have a valid driver's license wouldn't be eligible to vote?
No, no.
Well, how would you, how would you determine?
Do they, do they vote now?
I don't know. But you're talking about who, who is it? When you say the majority, they're gonna-
Well, let's just say, how about we just-
This is gonna be used. How are you gonna determine who these people are and where they live?
How about we just start, cause we can give a million hypothetical scenarios where, well, let's throw out the good for the perfect, cause it's not perfect. And, um, there's already 17,000 registered voters in Fayette County. How about we start with them?
So it's restricted, you know?
I wouldn't use the word restricted, cause it's not restricted. But again, you're, you're coming up with the, um, well, this can't work, cause it's not perfect. What systems are perfect? I don't know any organization, any system that anyone's ever worked in, any corporation that they're like, this is a perfect system. Everything about it works flawlessly. We all know that's not the world we live in. So I'm just saying that we already have, we right now, at a base level, there are 17,000 registered voters. They need to be, the ability to engage, if they have a question, if they have an idea, or they see a problem, that should go to the public rapidly. Then the problem is voters tend to vote uneducated. Most voters, myself included in the past, has voted uneducated. You don't have time, you're busy with your life, uh, I don't know, I, that sounds good. I guess I'm gonna go with the R, I'm gonna go with the D. This is a way where the voters become educated on the issue. So-
Do you think that unregistered voters, uh, unregistered people outweigh the registered voters in the county?
Well, again, we're talking about the voting system. So we're already talking about, it, it, again, it's not, um, we can work towards that. We gotta start somewhere. Again, we can't say, well, this will never work, cause it's not perfect day one. I don't know of any, anything we've done in history that off the gate was just the country. They, they were figuring that out. The, what they, what they talked about day one is not what we have right now. So again, you're giving a false narrative of where, well, this won't work because you, every single thing is not perfect. And it doesn't represent every single human being that's in Fayette County. It's like-
Sorry, I don't think it's false narrative to consider the people who are not registered or who are not registered to be, be in the county.
Well, again, we're just getting back to, we should at base level maybe start with those 17,000 people that are registered that did make the effort to vote. So we gotta start somewhere. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, actually, I could have a question. It is for all three of you. I would be curious as to how you plan to pay for your projects. Each of you has, have distinct projects you talk about throughout your answers. And some of them being, you've already answered, Sean. I'm, I'm sorry, but you've done a great job answering the question, but I would like to hear the other two.
Yes.
People are engaging in conversation.
Well, I'm gonna walk over and say, uh, the one I'll say about the, uh, engaging for schooling, Ohio's kind of Silicon Valley, instead of going for another levy, I said, we should reach out to these tech companies and say, invest in our school systems. You need computer scientists, you need material scientists. We need to invest and ask them to invest in our programs. That's one way I would do it.
I, um, I'm like, that's why I like grants. A lot of the grants are a match grant or a, um, or a grant that's given to the county. You don't really have to do much with. It's just kinda free money. But some of those projects, like with the schools, that doesn't even necessarily go through the commissioners. That's more through the schools. That would be their issue to deal with it. The, the roads and those types of projects, those are already done through the county, through tax dollars, for the gas tax, the different things. And, uh, the bike paths is for grant monies. The, the airport is grant monies, those types of things. And I do agree with the gentleman in the back, we, who's we? Who's we that's running the Citizens League? Who's we that's doing the checks and balances? Who's we that's reporting what the people said? I, as your county commissioner, would do that on my own. I would, I would get in touch with, I would be available, I should say, to everyone. And then as you, as you come to me, I would make the right decision based for the county, based off of the county.
Well, in my experience of working job at Family Services, I was, uh, privy to all of these emails that came in from, from our state agencies and, and, um, that kind of thing. So I know also that there's grant money out there that is available to small businesses for housing projects, for community service projects and those kind of things. So I would be, I, I've been out there asking people, did you hear about this grant? Did you hear about this grant? And many people haven't. So, um, making sure that people are aware of the availability to apply for those grants, supporting them and accessing those grants and working those grants, whatever they are, that are, is required of them. That's, that is where I would look at.
Can I just say, grants are great, but they're not free money. They're all the deficit. So we have to acknowledge that. We wanna return on investment with the money.
Okay. Well, that is going to conclude today. Uh, we have run out of time. I do wanna thank the three candidates for coming in, um, for being available to answer the questions that were set forth to them, for being able to answer. Any questions come from the audience. I wanna thank the local news station for coming in. We really appreciate having that for all of our guests that attended. Um, fellow Rotarians, if you would, stand and we'll do the four-way test.